Would you join me in the close of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bring us item two as our consent bucket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 7th, 2020. Receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held November 3rd, 2020. Accept a five-foot temporary construction easement from SBJ Properties at 748 North Janeway and Travis Mueller at 617 North Gale for the Kelly Creek Sewer Relocation Project. Approve a contract with Stan Drake for project services related to the City of Moore's streets and drainage. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020, 2021 in the amount of $4,608,527.19.
Move to approve.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item three is consider acceptance of the City of Moore's financial and single audit for fiscal year end June 30th, 2020.
Vice Mayor and Council, we have Bob Dylan with Dylan and Associates here to present the highlights of the audit and to answer any questions if you might have.
Thank you, Betty, Council members. We recently completed our audit of the June 30 financial statements. Hopefully you've had a chance to kind of peruse through some of it. What I'd like to do is discuss our opinion, hit some of the highlights, and then try and answer any questions that you might have related to the audit or our procedures. We did an audit of the financial statements and also the federal programs. There's a separate audit report that deals with federal funding that Moore's received. Our audit opinion on the financial statements was unmodified, which represents that we didn't -- in our opinion, there were not any material misstatements to the financial statements. Our opinion on the federal programs was also unmodified. You had approximately $11,800,000 in federal expenditures this year. Most of it was related to the CBG grant, the HUD grant. That was about $11.2 million. In March of 2020 this year, HUD did a -- they came in and conducted a review of the grant. They did have some administrative findings that they listed and a report to the city. And just as matter of procedure, we have to list those findings in our report also. The findings have all been corrected. They've all been -- there's a response in our federal audit program from the city, and they were all corrected in, I believe, July of this year. We also did a calculation on your property tax rates. Your property tax rate this year was 15.49, and in the prior year it was 16.53. So it's remained fairly steady. It's been pretty steady over the last several years, too. Your debt service coverage on your revenue notes, you have a required coverage of 1.25x. Your revenue available for debt service has to be at least 1.25x the debt service itself. Your actual is at 5.37. A lot of that is sales taxes pledged towards debt service, and if it's not used in the debt service, a lot of it's returned back to the general fund. Your sales and use tax actually increased last year, or last fiscal year, by about 1.6 million or about 4.5%. The total collected for last year was $38 million. Your carryover for the general fund, which represents how much you had in funds available for the next budget year, the budget year you're in right now, was $7.5 million, which equals about 17% of revenues. That's a fairly healthy carryover from year to year. That's good. And also you had a carryover on your municipal authority, the public works authority also. The long-term debt went down about $8.7 million during the year. You received funding on the CARES Act that leads to the date of our report of about $4.7 million. Any questions I can answer at this time?
The only question and clarification I have, the 15.5, that is only our portion of the property tax for the city, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to verify that and make sure that was documented, that we have remained stable.
Yeah, it's been pretty stable.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we accept the audit report as written.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Thank you. Item number four, consider adoption of Resolution Number 98020 pertaining to the general obligation bonds for 2021. Approved by a majority of the qualified voters at an election held June 26, 2018. Fixing the amount of the bonds to mature each year. Fixing the time and place of bonds are to be sold and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Vice Mayor and Council, this will be the 2021 issue when we close on these bonds to continue work on the projects approved in the June of 2018 election. The funds will be used for Eastern Avenue, Kelly Creek, and the underpass with the primary use of them. And Chris Gander and Terry Hawkins are both here to answer any questions. And the $18.9 million requested will still keep our mileage rate within the 15.5 to 16.5 range that we set to the voters we would do. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Gander and Mr. Hawkins also.
What rate are we currently getting on issued bonds?
They're historically low, so I -- well, I mean, it's a competitive sale.
Chris, could you?
Yeah, sure. But you're asking specifically like on this.
No, I'm not really specifically a range, it's perfect.
Probably one and a half percent.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Bring us item number five. Consider ordinance number 95720 granting to One Gas Inc. acting by and through its Oklahoma National Natural Gas Company Division and its successor and assigns for a period of 25 years from approval and acceptance of this ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise and the right to enter public ways to install, operate, maintain a distribution system within, along, across, over, and under the public way for the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and the public general -- and the public generally in the city. Defining the words and the phrases therein, providing for assignment, sale, or lease of the franchise, providing that the city may enact an ordinance charging persons transporting gas through the guarantees distribution system, a fee on the calculated value of such transported gas, providing for use and repair of public ways, providing for the regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, establishing rights and duties in the movement and the alteration of pipelines, providing for identification of the City of Moore, providing for the guarantees rules and regulations, providing for inspection of guarantees records, requiring guarantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchisee, providing for the construction of this ordinance upon invalidity of any part thereof, providing of the submission of the ordinance to an election of the qualified voters of the city, providing acceptance for this franchise by the guarantee of both the effective and the operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, providing severability and declaring an emergency.
Vice Mayor and Council, items five through seven are companion items. This is the franchise request from ONG. It was previously approved by council earlier to have on the ballot earlier this spring, but due to the pandemic, ONG had requested that the election be postponed or be canceled. And so they are back now asking for another election to be called. Marty Euler and Dustin Frederick are here from ONG to answer any questions.
To further clarify, this is only approving it being on the ballot, not endorsing it as a city council person.
Correct. Are there any questions? Nope?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Bring us item six. Consider approval of emergency provision of ordinance number 95720, it being immediately necessary for the preservation of peace, health, safety, and public good of the City of Moore and the inhabitants thereof, and the provisions of this ordinance be put into full force and effect. An emergency is hereby declared to exist by reason whereof. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after the date provided herein as provided by law.
Again, Vice Mayor and Council, just a companion item, recommend approval.
Motion to approve. All right, we had the motion and a second. Call the vote. Jason made the motion and Adam seconded it.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Bring us to number seven. Consider adopting Resolution Number 97920, authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, to be held on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said city the approval or disapproval of ordinance number 95720, which ordinances grants a natural gas utility franchise to Gas One Inc. acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors, assigns for the period of 25 years for a natural gas distribution system within the City of Moore. Motion to approve. Second. Okay, we had the motion and a second. Call the vote.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item eight, consider authorizing the purchase of one Ford police interceptor utility vehicle in the amount of $42,259 from Bob Moore Ford from the United States General Services Administration, contract number SW035 pursuant to Part VII, Section 7-2056.
Mayor and Council, we would respectfully request approval of this. It's a budgeted scheduled purchase and replacing an unmarked detective car.
Motion to approve.
Second. We had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Motion carries. Item carries. Item nine, consider authorizing the budget purchase of a virtual police training simulator system from Apex Officer as a sole source provider in the amount of $62,500.
Vice Mayor and Council, we also would recommend approval of this virtual reality simulator. It is an upgrade of our current police shooting simulator. We had scheduled a budgetary item to upgrade the software on our current shooting simulator. Through our research, we discovered that technology has advanced quite a bit, and that this not only brings into play shooting accountability, but also exercises judgment, problem-solving, and decision-making skills of police officers. It's highly interactive, and we think it will be the leading edge in law enforcement. We will be the only agency in Oklahoma to have a system like this.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Y'all have had opportunity to look at it and go try it out, or some of the officers?
Yes, sir. So we spoke to Lowdi California and a police department in Massachusetts that also has it, and we sent Troy Fulbright, who is our training sergeant, to Las Vegas, not for a family trip. Yeah, I can assure this body that he flew in that morning, got in a car, drove to the company, went through the system, and was flying out that evening. He did not have any downtime, but we actually got hands on the system with the company. And he is a subject matter expert in use of force, and he is our training sergeant. He highly recommended it, plus the other agencies that we've talked to across the country that do use the system also highly recommend.
Okay. Great. Where would you utilize? Where's your training facility that you utilize?
We don't have a training facility, sir. We have a room where we host shift briefings. I think Councilmember Webb was in there recently, where we host shift briefings, that we can move tables around and different things like that. Currently, Councilmember, there is a large projector system that takes up a good chunk of the back portion of that room. That would go away, and this is a -- much takes up less space, but we would use it in that room whenever.
So it could be set up in a portable type environment where you set it up and you move it when it's being used?
Yes, sir. It would primarily be set up in that area continually, but it doesn't take up the footprint that our current system does.
Okay, very good. All right, we had the motion and a second. Did you get that? Okay, call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Bring us to number 10. Consider declaring a virtual 180 police simulator as obsolete and authorize the equipment to be sold to the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office for $30,000.
Vice Mayor and Council, this item we'd also recommend approval on. It is our current system that we have, and it would cost us $57,000 to do the software upgrade. And so by making this somewhat obsolete to us, because we know all the scenarios that it currently has, officers go through it, they don't receive very much training value out of it until we were to do the software upgrade. And so this is be a way to offset some of the cost of the newer virtual realities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Not as good to see it going to a sheriff's office. We're able to get some of our investment back. So call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thanks. Number 11, consider the approval of an addendum to the disposition of the development agreement with the Curve Apartments LP and NHS for Curve LLC.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Curve Apartments LP has requested an extension for construction completion for the curve. The original construction completion date outlined in the original agreement was December 31st of 2020. This addendum would extend the construction completion date for all buildings to July 31st of 2021, and the construction completion date for the full project, including the parkland and other public improvements, to October 31st of 2021. There have been several delays due to the coronavirus pandemic. The manufacturer for roof trusses was shut down for a month, delaying the progress of one building. There was a major windstorm in April of 2020. There were manufacturing delays due to COVID. These damages have taken a significant amount of time to remedy. There was an eight-week delay on cabinet deliveries due to COVID. The city has also issued -- had issued a stop work order on two of the three buildings in September. One of those was removed on one of the buildings in October. The city is still waiting on updated fire alarm permits for one section of the other building. The extension to the -- to this agreement is within the expenditure deadline for the CBGDR grant. SAD recommends approval.
What is our deadline?
Our expenditure deadline is September of 2022.
Okay, very good. Motion to approve.
I just want a question. Have they started leasing those, or?
Yeah, they are pre-leasing. There's a trailer on site for people to visit, and all the information's on the website.
And do you feel comfortable that they can make that deadline?
Yes.
Second. Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sorry. Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thanks. Number 12, consider awarding RFP number 2021-004 Disaster Debris Monitoring to Debris Tech LLC and approve the contract in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Vice Mayor and Council, as you're well aware, in the week of October 26th, we did have a major ice storm that caused significant damage to a lot of trees and damage to debris from falling trees. And as a result of that, we decided to try to get ahead of it and get an early jump on it, and because we had a contract with Silver Star Construction, we authorized them to proceed with starting the cleanup process. We felt very confident that this would be a project that would require, or that we would be able to receive FEMA funds and FEMA reimbursement for -- and qualify for relief from FEMA. And so one of the things that was a requirement of any declaration by FEMA is a debris monitoring requirement. And so as part of that, we did go ahead and, on a 30-day basis, you could hire a firm to begin, so we wouldn't lose any funding from that first 30 days. So we did hire a firm to go ahead and do the debris monitoring. But part of FEMA's requirement is that you have to go out within 30 days and start your procurement process and send out requests for proposals. We sent out requests for proposals to four firms. We only received back the one proposal from Debris Tech, the same firm that we were using as we got an early jump on it. A requirement of FEMA is that since we only received one proposal, they asked us to get some cost comparisons. We did a cost comparison with two other firms that were doing work in other communities, and when we compared the hourly rates, you know, they were very close as to the other firms. In fact, the average, the two other firms, the overall average of the four major positions, when you added up the -- an hour for each of those positions for Debris Tech was actually 50 cents less than the average of the other two. So it was a very reasonable fee that we had received in their proposal. In fact, today, you may know already that we did receive notice that a declaration was approved and that we will be eligible. Cleveland County is one of the counties that was approved for eligibility for FEMA reimbursement. So with that, we would recommend that you approve the contract with Debris Tech for the debris monitoring.
Now, will it be paid for with the FEMA money in addition to the debris removal, or is that just part of the total cost package?
Well, we have a cost package for the pickup with Silver Star Construction, and then we have a cost package for the debris monitoring. Those folks that, as a truck comes into the burn site, they'll take a picture of what's in the truck to give an idea of the size of the load. And then after they dump it and they come back out, they take a picture again to show that with a timestamped date of the picture is that it was empty when it left. So it's a separate individual contract with Debris Tech. However, it is eligible for FEMA reimbursement.
Still at the 75% or?
75% is eligible for federal, and then another 12.5% is eligible with the state. So it could be up to a total of 87.5%.
Okay. For just the Debris Tech contract?
No, for both things. For the whole thing.
All right, very good.
At the ACOG meeting, our monthly ACOG meeting last week, and we all discussed the debris pickup, and there's probably 50 communities that are represented there, and the majority of them haven't even started their pickup yet. So I know in the City of Moore, we know what to do, and we're on the ball, appreciate the works. You guys make it happen as quickly as possible.
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKinsey?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Bring us item 13. Consider authorizing the purchase of a trackless Bellator Electric Family Train from True American Classics in the amount of $49,750 as the lowest quote.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the trackless electric train that we are going to be using in Central Park, and it will also be used as a transportation between Central Park and Old Town Park when it is developed.
Will it just be driven on sidewalks or be on a roadway at all?
Can probably be on both, but we'll keep it to sidewalks. And then hopefully we'll have a track made between Central Park and Old Town specifically for it.
So what's the utilization, time of year, number of hours a day?
Special events, mostly.
So it's not a daily use kind of thing?
No, no, it won't be a daily use. It will be stored, and then we'll -- we're working on that.
Okay. My church has one, and that's always a point of convention is where to drive a store.
Whitney's been working diligently on finding a location for our train. We want to take care of it. It's really very creative. It'll be quite entertaining.
So, I'm sorry, did you say where we are going to store it?
Don't know yet.
We don't -- how long does it take to get this after we order it? Is this like a month, seven years?
How long will it take? Four months?
It's gonna take four months, and we don't know where we're gonna store it?
We have several options.
What are some of our options?
Would you like to talk with us?
So currently, we are looking at building a building not only to store this facility, but to store the potential additional equipment that we have. But if that isn't a viable option, we do have a storage container where we can push it in there, and it will work. It's just it's one side entry and exit, so we'd have to physically detach each train car and put it in there. So it's doable, but it's not really.
Where is that right now?
That's currently at Central Park, in our store, right next to our park maintenance building.
All right. Any other discussion, comments? I beg your pardon. Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Danielle McKinsey?
No.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Bring us item 14, is consider approval of a FY 2021 budget supplement to budget additional funds and related expenses in the general fund and special revenue fund.
Vice Mayor and Council, at the November 16th council meeting, council approved the contract with Norman Regional Hospitals and staff for the city to provide 911 dispatch services. This budget amendment will establish a budget for two additional dispatchers to handle these calls, as well as the revenue from INSTAT to cover the cost. We're also requesting a budget amendment to budget available hotel motel tax to purchase some needed mowers for the parks, for park maintenance. We are also requesting a budget amendment to budget available state seizure funds to allow the police department to convert existing handguns to Glocks and to purchase rifles and related equipment. This budget amendment is the companion for Agenda Item Number 16. Excuse me, 16. Be glad to answer any questions you may have, and also I have Whitney here from Parks and the police chief available to answer any other questions you might have.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. No questions, and we've had a motion and a second. Okay, no questions. And we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes, thank you. Item fifteen, consider ordinance number nine-five-eight-two-zero amending Part Ten, offenses and crimes, chapter five, offenses against against the public, section ten dash five seventeen, prevention of youth access to tobacco, providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Vice Mayor and Council, in May of this year, state law raised the age for individuals to possess and purchase tobacco and vape products from eighteen to twenty-one. And what this ordinance does is it just puts us in line with what state law has changed. It's just about six months late. It happened in May, we're doing it now, but we're getting in line now.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries, thank you. Item sixteen, consider authorizing the purchase of a hundred Glock seventeen Gen five pistols and five Glock Gen four training pistols from GT Distributors Inc., offstate contract number SW two-two-zero-four-four-seven-nine, in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And after authorized staff to solicit bids for the purchase of fifteen SIG two-two-three rifles, along with accessories for said firearms.
Vice Mayor and Council, this item, we recommend approval on. It accomplishes a variety of different tasks, which hopefully, we can answer any questions that you might have. Currently, today, we have five different types of handguns out on the street and this would take us to a single handgun, which we would buy one type of handgun round, one type of rifle round, whereas now, we're buying multiple different types of rounds. And it's really expensive whenever you get into certain calibers like three fifty-seven Sig or forty-five to buy those rounds if any of you are tracking ammo cost. And what this does, it allows us to issue the same platform in rifle and the same platform in handgun to all officers and get all personally owned weapons out of the off the street.
Great. And I also like the fact that it allows for just some additional safety and parts are interchangeable in the event of emergencies and if you need extra, my vision, you can give it to a partner.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, what's the uniqueness of the training pistols?
The training pistols? Councilmember, when you take a regular Glock and you pull the trigger, you have to manually slide the round back to reset the trigger. These four training pistols have an automatic reset. There are specific copyrighted Glock that they can do dry firing. There's a lot of training. It sounds, I don't know how much you know about firearms, sir, and I don't mean to speak down to you, but in firearms training, dry firing is a big component. So, just getting trigger squeezed down. And this allows them to get multiple trigger squeezes down and dry fire.
Cool. Motion per. Second. Had a motion and Jason, with a second? All right, we'll call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. And we had an addendum to the agenda and that was item sixteen point one.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, we had hoped we were gonna have the sole source justification for equipment item for the station and we were unable to get that. So, we're requesting this item be stricken and we will come back to council at a future date and request permission to bid the equipment.
So, do you need a motion to table that or anything?
To strike.
Start it, okay. Motion to strike seventeen sixteen point one.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes, thank you. Seventeen, recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item seventeen, consent docket. A, receive and approve amendments of the regular more public works authority meeting held December seven, twenty twenty. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million one hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred, or one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Motion per. Second. Had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes, thank you. Eighteen, consider approval of property and contents insurance policy through O-MAG and excess property and contents insurance policy through Homeland Insurance Company of New York, excess flood insurance through Voyager Envy Insurance Company, physical damage coverage for the city's sanitation trucks and mobile command center through Great American Insurance Company with Russell Hollingsworth of Dillingham Insurance as agent in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents as the total premium for all policies.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is our renewal for our property and contents insurance or excess flood, excess property and contents and our physical coverage for our sanitation trucks and the mobile command center as well. I would like to note that the expiring premium was four hundred and thirty-six thousand. Today, our new premium is four hundred and sixty-eight. That's an increase of about thirty-two thousand. And I'm gonna go through and explain to you why it has increased. The rise in the premium really is a result of several factors. One, we had about an eighteen percent increase in our property that is covered. That is a result of the additional more property, one. And then, two, we also had an appraisal done of some of our larger properties at the beginning of the year to give us a more accurate reflection of what our values really are. So, our property increase went up from one hundred and forty-five million to one hundred and seventy-one million, which is what it is today. Our excess property premium also increased by thirteen thousand and that was because we had to raise what our coverage was. Last year was fifty million and because we now have one hundred and seventy-one million worth of property, we had to increase our excess property as well to seventy million, which is why the increase there of the additional thirteen thousand. The premium for sanitation trucks increased by five thousand. The reason for that is is we did purchase a brand-new twenty twenty sanitation truck this year and we also added the mobile command unit into that policy as well last year as well. Our excess flood actually decreased by, looks like about six thousand dollars. And lastly, I do want to have, I do have good news that because we had no claims last year, we are entitled to our thirty thousand dollar, what I'm gonna call a rebate or refund. And I checked with that and that will be received January of twenty twenty-two. There is a one-year lag on the on the renewal. So, we are entitled to that and we will receive the thirty thousand dollars. If you have no claims in this year, then we'll be, every January, we'll be getting a ten percent rebate or refund. And I, and Russell is here to answer any questions if there's anything specific.
Any questions? Hearing now, just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Staying.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Bring us to nineteen. Consider approval of excess public officials and employment practices liability policy with us at Hudson Insurance Company in the amount of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, a twenty-six percent rate increase over last year with Glenn Harris and Associates as agent.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is our renewal for our excess public officials and employment practices liability policy. Last year, our premium was thirty-one thousand dollars and this year it is thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty. The primary reason for the increase here is, I was told, market conditions. Stratford, who was our policy carrier for last year, a previous company, non-renewed all of their policies due to increasing number of claims and the high dollar amounts of those claims. So, we had some difficulty even finding coverage with the same amount of coverage that we had. This is the same level of coverage that we had last year and there is an eight thousand dollar increase from thirty-one to thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty. And Dan Kramer is here also to answer any questions.
Any questions? Nope, it is in motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries, thank you. Item twenty, consider approval of option zero-two-three-one-five-zero-seven from Midwest Employers Casualty Company for the city's excess workers' compensation insurance policy with an annual premium of one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one using Tom Beckham with the Tom Beckham Company as agent.
Vice Mayor and Council, this policy is our excess workers' compensation policy. Like I said, Tom Beckman from Beckman Company is our agent. We received this year four different options for renewal and they are here in our packet. Now, the four options, we are recommending option zero-two-three-one-five-zero-seven from Midwest Employers Casualty Company. The only difference between this policy and last year is our specific fire and police retention will increase to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Last year, it was six hundred thousand. The premium is one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one, which is a two thousand dollar increase. Last year, it'd been one hundred and eighteen thousand. The big thing about this one that was actually included in addition from last year is that it is specific and also the aggregate coverage is also included. And from speaking with Mr. Beckman, he says that that was rare and it was hard for him to be able to get that, but we do have that option. And that's why we chose this option, which was five thousand dollars more, but it was the option that we were recommending.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries, thank you. We will recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item twenty-one is our consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held December seven, twenty twenty. Item B, approve payment of a worker's compensation settlement in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and five dollars for CBR claim number two-zero-five-zero-zero-zero-eight-two-one to Ernest Blockett and authorized placement on Advalon tax rule. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Had the motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. We will now recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting. Vanessa, we'll call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here. Item twenty-three is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more economic development authority meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-four is consider adoption of resolution number one-eight-twenty authorizing employment of financial advisor, authority counsel and bond counsel to assist in preparing financing financing documents pertaining to the authority's four million dollar sales tax revenue note, series twenty twenty-one municipal capital improvements project, authorizing financial advisor to obtain bids for interested financial institutions for said financing and containing other provisions related thereto.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna ask if it was a companion item, but you're probably going to tell us all that.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the proposal for a note to borrow money to help pay front the costs for the cleanup of the limbs and other things. As Mr. Iver said earlier, we did get the disaster declaration today, but we're still probably at least six months away from getting any other FEMA money. We're expecting interest rates below two percent based on other issues. Mr. Gander and I have talked about it in the recent closing. And so, we think this this is a good long-term play financially for the cash flow and structure of the city. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Thanks, Louis. Item number twenty-five, new business, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Anybody sign up? Or is anyone here that'd like to speak? Nope. We'll bring us to item B, items from city council or trustees. Anybody?
I have a few questions and items to talk about. The house that we approved, the demolition of with the junk, how is that coming along? Because I've received several calls about it this week. That's a zero lot line house. Do we have any update or have, has the owner reached out to us or anything like that? Oh, sorry.
Twenty-one sixteen South Briar Cliff?
Yes.
Yes. We have heard from the owner. The owner is okay with us to demolish the house. We have had that all set up, but they will need a period of dry weather because the equipment that they use to tear the the house down will sink into the ground if it's wet. And so, since the last time we had the meeting, we haven't had, I think it rained right after that and then we've had the snow event this earlier. So, we're waiting for that stretch of just dry weather. And once that happens, they'll go out there and they will remove the structure.
Okay, so there is no, besides the dry period, that waiting for the weather, we're not waiting on any other kind of period?
No, yeah, everything's ready to go.
Okay, I've received several pictures about it and it it's looking worse if that's possible. It's there's there's trash everywhere and so hopefully we have some dry weather.
So, are they gonna take down the slab or are they gonna rip the slab off?
They will, no, we we remove the slab and everything. It's a clean lot.
So, leave the driveway or take the driveway?
Uh, we take everything. It's a clean lot.
Very good.
And we level the lot.
I'm just assuming the people have left that weren't living there?
No, they had, they hadn't three days ago when I was getting texts about it.
Right, we've posted the structure, no trespassing, uninhabitable. They're not supposed to be in there. I would imagine that that hasn't stopped them, but it is unsafe.
Okay.
Definitely is. Okay, that's the only question I realized. Then, the temperature check thing that's added at the station, this is like high-tech. I'm guessing you know about this because I have not been in a little while. Have you guys been to this station? Okay, where do you get your pictures from? First, I need to know all about this thing for like a little bit because it's pretty high-tech. You walk in, you stare at this computer and it checks your temperature and tells you that if you're hot or not. You do it before you work out. And then, it says pass or green or something. The picture that popped up is not my picture related to the station. It's a picture from like, I don't know, Google Images or something. It's a little bit strange. Do you know anything about it? I'm just curious.
The picture came off of that stuff.
It's my council picture. Yes, it's a little bit strange, though. Anyway, the the machine's cool, that's all. The machine's cool. You guys should go check it out, even if you're not gonna work out at the station and
We can thank the police department for that.
They did say that. Hey, I asked all your people at the front desk and they were very knowledgeable about what they knew about it. But, and then I do have something for, I don't know if you guys have drove down Nineteenth in the past seventy-two hours? And without sounding like everyone who feels exactly like we do, is there any way we can have a police officer sitting at Nineteenth and telephone? I saw it a couple of weeks ago, sitting in that middle lane? Because there, it is a nightmare. There are people, probably six cars turning every single time on red and it's impossible to get through there. And just with the Christmas traffic, if for the next several days, we could have some increased police traffic or police presence there, it is a nightmare right there on Nineteenth to telephone.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be awesome. Thank you. Those are the only things I had.
I have one thing. I walk at the park, at Central Park every night and two nights now, which one night I went into the station and alerted them, but there's been teenagers beating on the Christmas tree, taking ornaments off the Christmas tree, doing all that. So, I don't know if there's any way that we can kind of have a little bit more of a presence out there to try to stop. And I mean, the one night, they came across the street with their sticks and I chased them off, but And I mean, one night they came across the street with their sticks and I chased them off, but... But, it makes me angry that they're out there, you know, messing up our new tree, so.
All right, thank you.
I also have an, I've received a couple of phone calls regarding the Second Street project and I was wondering if we could get an update on that project?
Sure. Essentially, the project started back, best to my recollection, we were gonna start at the end of the school year, which would have been the end of May, but I think we were able to start early May because of COVID nineteen and school being shut down. The first two blocks from Broadway to Chestnut went very well. We removed the existing asphalt and replaced it with concrete for those two blocks and provided a parking, additional parking on the north side of Second Street in front of the school property. And I believe it took us about two, two and a half months to complete that, for those first two sections. And then as we were getting ready to tie in the storm drain system into the box structure from Chestnut West to the I thirty-five service road, when we opened up and removed that very east end, what we found was that when that box was poured way back in the nineteen-sixties, what they used for forms was like corrugated metal as their forms and over time, and they left them there. Typically, when you provide forms, you remove them before you leave the site. But the forms were left in the structure and over time, as water has gone through there, they have corroded and they have dropped down. And we're basically, for that entire five hundred and fifty feet of drainage channel, an enclosed box, there was this material that was, had fallen down from the top portion and from the side portions and was essentially blocking the flow, a good portion of the flow. So we had to kind of back up for about a couple of weeks to decide how we were gonna approach to replace and finish this particular block. The original design was set up to go ahead and just put the new road over the top of the existing box. But we couldn't leave that drainage structure the way it was. And so what we did is we actually removed the top of the existing box. And then the new design was that we were going to kind of build like a decking on a bridge, spanning over the width of that existing box because the rest of the concrete structure was in very good shape, so we wanted to utilize it instead of tearing it in half and having to place new concrete. And so the timeframe, and that's, I think that's been the concern of the citizens, is how long it's taking. The timeframe to be able to put that, span that box, we didn't wanna, for the top and to become the new driving surface with the curb and gutter. We didn't want to provide an inconvenience for the residents along that north side of the block where we were replacing that top to where they had to walk an entire block to get to their house and park their car up by the school. So we went ahead and split it up into three sections so that no more than two driveways would be inaccessible during the construction of that phase. And in doing so, that required three phases. In order to place the steel and then the time it takes for the concrete to cure to be able to drive over the top of it, such as, similar to a span on a bridge, is about three weeks to a month. And so in breaking that into three sections, it's taken, we had hoped to be done around the end of Thanksgiving. However, with weather and, you know, the timeframe with the span on those, essentially a little bridge, mini-bridge if you will, has just taken, you know, time as required by construction before you can put the weight of vehicles on it. Moving forward, the storm drain system on the north side, those are in, we're putting the storm drain system on the south side. We do have a bit of a delay now, we have some gas service lines that we're waiting on to be relocated. Once they're relocated, we'll come in and finish. Then we'll go ahead and put sidewalks on each side and clean up and finish the project. Anticipate that we're probably looking at, weather-dependent, we're probably looking end of January, mid-February before we'll be able to finish that.
Great, thank you Terry.
We'll tell you that things look a whole lot better up there, all the way from Howard Street and all the other improvements that have been made in Old Town, so. I know, especially on Second Street, their drainage will be a lot better than what it was. And anything, anybody else? Item C, items from the city management.
Vice Mayor Counsel, several items, but first and most important, this is the final council meeting for Richard Sanford as our Public Works Director. I'd like, I have a proclamation I'd like Vice Mayor Ham to read.
Mr. Sanford, why don't you come on up here so we can present this to you? And we have another plaque that has your start date, and I was looking at that and it was March of nineteen eighty-five? I was a junior in high school. Anyways, this is from our mayor and all of us on the council, it's a letter of appreciation and congratulations. In recognition of honest and faithful service to the city of Moore, this letter of appreciation and congratulations is hereby presented to Richard Sanford upon the occasion of your retirement. This letter is awarded as a testimony of your loyal and dedicated service to the city of Moore. You have been a conscientious and trustworthy employee and your dedicated interests, your dedicated interest and devotion to duty have had a valuable and positive effect on efficiency and morale in your department. And we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty. You will be missed and we all hope you will accept our very best wishes for continued success and happiness in the future. Presented by our mayor, Glenn Lewis, and the entire city.
And also an appreciation for your thirty-five years of dedicated service.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Working for the city of Moore has been a blessing to me and my family. In thirty-five years, a lot of life can happen. In the city of Moore, all my friends out here, all of you have always been there to help me get through things and I appreciate it very much. My wife Patty's here and two of my daughters, Christie and Kelly, so anyway, they snuck in on me. Thank all of you.
Thank you so much.
And I do think Richard was behind the recent snowstorm as a party gift, just to remind the city of the streets were when he was Public Works Director after the snowstorm. We had a, we had a presentation by the Regional Transit Authority last week, giving an update on where they are on the commuter rail. And they're still analyzing things and doing work and essentially what they said was, they thought they would have the final analysis done by June of two thousand and twenty-two. So they still have a lot of things to do and we'll just, they want to begin to have quarterly meetings and so we'll attend those and we'll report to council on just what progress is being made and where things are on that. Fire Department with their Santa Express this year was able to provide gifts to one hundred and seventy-one families, which is approximately four hundred and sixty-two kids. So we appreciate the Fire Department, Santa Express, and everything they do with that. We had the tenth annual Shop with a Cop this past week and over the years, they've served two hundred and seventy-one kids. Because of COVID, it had to be changed up a little bit, they started at the police station and did that, a very successful man and I believe that they're gonna keep it at the police station from this point forward if I understand correctly. Anyway, we appreciate everything that our police and fire do for our citizens. The limb cleanup, we're up to seventy-two thousand cubic yards and here next week, I think we will make one complete pass throughout the city. And so then we'll go back through, make a second pass and see where we are after that. Hopefully, we can get everything done in the, in the, in the second pass, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you very much. And just one quick note, I did talk with our mayor for just a little bit tonight on the phone and he really wanted to be here. He's doing good and feeling well, he's just, one of his, his eyes still a little bit uncomfortable, so he wasn't able to be here tonight. But we wish him and his wife Pam well. So item number twenty-six would be executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, discuss appraisal and potential sale of certain real property in the city of Moore and authorize staff to proceed as directed as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B three.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, we'll be in executive session, thank you for being here.
First, it'll just take about ten minutes for, for taking sessions. Ten minutes? Has Randy's sound on?
Okay, well, the motion's right, the city resolution is waiting, it's way up.
Sometimes it's a hard time hearing where it comes from.
Jason Blair and Adam Webb?
Okay, where, okay, where? Then on the second one, it was Blair and Kansas, right, on the meeting resolution?
Melissa and Louis. Wait, this is that one that's nine fifty-seven?
That's one for me then. I think that was Blair and Kansas, if I'm not wrong.
Hey Vanessa, I've got a dumb question.
No questions, Beth?
So what happens after they're done here? I'm trying to figure it out if I should still be recording the audio or not, you know what I mean?
No.
I should probably, it could probably be stopped, like what happens after they're done there, just adjournment?
They'll come back and either, I forgot what it was.
Because right now, it's technically still recording all the video and stuff, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's fine, I think they do that, they just usually just turn the sound off and put it on in executive session at...
Well, this is...
Play or whatever.
I get what you're saying. Okay, I'll just leave it on, I'll just maybe turn off, turn all the mics off.
They'll decide whether or not to take action on what they discuss and then they'll do adjournment. It's only like ten minutes or I think it's...
I'll leave it on for now, just no cuss words, I guess. No, I don't know, I don't know, it's not, it won't be so bad.
Yeah, maybe ten minutes.
Yeah, ready, son?
Yeah, he must have passed it on. And I do this right myself.
Tell that to him?
Tell that to him, the proclamation?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the... I try to, if you're out... Because sometimes I'm having, you bring it and I'm having a side too, it's longer use it to me, so I try to avoid not to. Oh, yeah, sure.
I was talking to somebody today, it was about my age and I think what we all do, I'm probably, when you get to this age and you do start having hearing problems is you don't realize how much you give the people to listen when they talk.
Yeah, I can see that.
Hey, you said talking about hearing problems?
I went to, I had, I had a bad ear infection, so I go, and at some point in the process, and this is like in the last couple of months, I get the, what, hearing problem, right? And she do not, at the end of the release, she said, your hearing's pretty good, but you do miss some high frequencies which are commonly associated with women or wives. I just thought, I was like, oh, yes, she literally said that. And I said, I can't wait to talk about that.
Well, in my life, talks in a real low voice. And I tell her, and she goes, you keep on telling me to speak up, you're going deaf, what the problem is and... And I know it's somewhat rare here in my family, but you may be like me, I have ear infections, usually the allergies are all April and October. And my ear doctor could give me some stuff to try to stem it off when I feel it coming. But you being a police officer, I'm sure you're wearing pretty good about wearing ear protection for... But with you being a police officer, I'm sure you're wearing pretty good about wearing ear protection for it on the range. In my early days, when I was bird hunting, I never wore ear protection. And, and I'm sure a lot of that is from my, I always had a shot.
I, I think that, that, that's a lot of people's issue.
I went on the range one time and did, uh, just shot a couple rounds without ear protection, just to see. Oh, I'll never do that again. Cause it is piercing and it just rings. Now, when you're, when you're pumping it around, it's a different story. So you're lying here and you can be, the story is where you're unable to hear that. But out there on the range when I did it, oh, I wouldn't do that again. Like it sent me a few minutes to get it back.
Yeah, it's kind of scary.
But I'm like you, I had a, um, like I went diving a couple of months, probably a month or two ago, and I didn't do good, get out of camera ears. And I had ear issues. I mean, I had the, the different sprays to try to get out. So I waited a while, first about two weeks, getting a bad ear infection in this one, and this one's got some water. And she gave me some sprays and some more stuff like ear tone. I was like, oh.
That's the thing that drives me nuts, is you get like fluid or water in your ears and that's, and I think it's, my doctor says a lot of it stems from allergies.
Yes.
And you know, your ears and your nose are all connected inside and through, so you're, you know, the reason I call them ear, nose and throat doctors, you know?
They're all connected.
And, uh, and so that's getting fluid in my ears is driving that. And occasionally my ears will get stocked up and you kind of just run the other ear if you're using a phone or whatever.
You can clear it by blowing a little?
Sometimes you can, but, but when you get both ears stocked up, it is just a nightmare. But, but anyway, I had pretty good luck the last year. I hadn't had that problem, but I did try to take the drops he gave me, but it just wasn't. I don't mind getting whole, I just, I pay all the parts when I come, you know?
I did the same thing too. Uh, sometimes on a runner exercise, I get popping this year, so I have to, I have to clear it and okay, but it just, it just won't go away. I tried to put some stronger allergy sprays on it and it seems to make a difference, but.
He's actually gave me a nasal spray to use and it seems to help and he, it's told me to take, uh, uh, I take Claritin and liquid gels year round. Cause I go back down to the farm every weekend and stuff, so, and, and so I'm out, you know, ragweed and all that crap. Yeah, it's, uh, that's, that's part of it, I get it over, it's my, it makes a small part out of it.
You know, my doctor's having go from Zyrtec, you know, Zyrtec D every now and then, I was like, oh, can I run this for a little bit, try this?
Yeah. I used to use Zyrtec, I switched to Claritin.
I'm doing a leg rub, but I think you are supposed to like.
Rotate.
Rotate them.
Cause your body kind of, you're shooting a lot of them.
It's like one year I'll use Claritin, one year I'll use, uh, leg, but a leg rub is working for me now.
I was wanting to, if this is the year I put your piece in, but I always have more wear from this here. And I don't touch my ears when you, when you keep it up. And I said, it took them a while to figure out, yeah, you got, you got fluid in your ear. It was in there a while.
I don't think that fluid, when it comes to your sadnesses as well, I think that's must be treated for the last or something, I guess.
I guess, yeah. I said, this is, this is the worst cycle period, it's goofy, but I can't get, you know? But I was serious with it when I went to the ear doctor. She told me that's considering I, that, that the range you're in, that you tend to lose something, tends to be like, I think so how women talk.
Yeah.
Like, she said, your spouse. And I told her, I said, no, I said, this, yes, I have these cues.
Get your phone out.
Yes, she said that. She, my, my partner didn't believe, she, you know, she's, she's, she took a moment, but she didn't believe. I said, this is what a female, I'm worried about. It's, it's a pitch that, that men traditionally associate with women. Like, wow, that explains a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm not, I'm not slap, because I get a lot. I thought it was funny, but she said basically, you're, you're okay. Cause I hate those hearing tests when you're getting a booth, you're like, yeah, I can hear. But I think they, they have a way to kind of screen this stuff.
Right.
That, cause you, you can tell somebody you can groove or like, like, I remember a couple of times I took a, I took a breath, I was like, wait a minute, is this how? I don't think. But I think it's, uh, they have probably large in there or, you know? And it's like, it's kind of like, you know, in a polygraph, you get kind of a, you groove them and they, they're able to distinguish, you know, your, cause if you're okay every little time, you're probably okay. You know, but when your breathing does this, then you got a problem, you know what I'm saying?
I had one guy at work got hearing aid this past year and it's really conspicuous, you know, they're pretty small anymore. And, uh, and I said, I don't mean to be nosy, but I said, I, I, I do less apparently, I've had it tested. And, um, I said, well, maybe nosy, I said, what's, what's that cost? He kind of liked it. He goes, well, it's kind of like buying a car. You either buy a Honda or you buy Chevrolet or you buy Cadillac. And he goes, well, I bought it at the Chevrolet and he says it's kind of middle price. It's, uh, but still like five or six thousand dollars, you know, so that's a lot.
I think it's all about tech and that's probably some of the top tech right there.
And I said, you probably see the commercials on TV where now they have the size of pencil erasers that you can put in your ear. His had a little clear tube coming over and it was real thin, it hit the Honda ear.
And that's some real cool stuff, right? I've seen it like, I think a guy over here that we used to talk to, he, the little tiny things? And like, you can see that, like little, I don't see that tech, but you can kind of see it, but the tech is that if you can't see some of it, you're in one's there. Or you have, you know, even some of the bigger ones that have tech. That's why you be careful, you buy those and you can't fix them anymore.
Um, I'm not very, I'm good with the shovel, but shovel on the whole, I'm not very good with anything technology, so I'll probably just mess it up if I have.
We, you know, one of the biggest scams in police, in police work though is the tasers. Taser updates on there about every year and then they stop making parts for the other ones. You always have to buy new tasers every two years to not have it working. And then, then they came out, and this, and where this is probably all from litigation, right, several years, but like when we first got these, um, you know, we do a spark test of it. I need to make sure it's working, so you turn on, click, or you can, now taser tells us we have to run through the full cycle. So I've got taser, but, yeah, I already have a place better and they're expensive. Because I, I have to spark test it every day for five seconds. Just imagine you work, um, two hundred, two hundred days a year, just roughly, you're t, you're, you've got two hundred taser shots basically for nothing. But they're, you know, I don't know, that, that's, that's all from litigation.
Yeah, I've never, I, I don't know nothing about tasers, but how many rounds, I don't know what you call it, but how many rounds do you have on a taser gun?
I just purchased.
Two cartridges?
This one's a, that.
It's, it's, so okay, does that take one cartridge every time you use it or?
Yeah, so when you hit it, two, you know, two procs come out and it's got a fifteen feet line, it's like fishing line. But then if you reload, um, you have to turn it off, you can turn it back on, because I forgot to turn it on. And I kind of got my hair mixed in and it was. But you have, so you, 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 you have to use it to turn it off and on. Now they got some new tasers that come out that, uh, I think the new one, uh, the new line come out has two cartridges already in it. So you go pop and then if you have too many, you get popped, they go again. So you don't have to reload initially. Now I think my guess is they'll probably have a place to carry extra cartridge.
So it's just a, takes a cartridge for every shot.
So do you think some of those cartridges are bad when they're not doing anything to people?
I've never heard of they misfire, but, you know, I don't know, it's, but it could be a problem, uh, maybe you think if you need a good connection on somebody, maybe you don't. You think you get a good hit, you don't. Maybe it's bad cartridge. Like I, I just haven't heard anything about cartridges being bad ever. I'm sure there is, you know, just like bullets are done, you know, maybe five or a hundred thousand dollars, you won't get, you won't, you know, won't discharge. But it's probably, it's probably higher than likely. And they used to teach us, um, if you want, if you got somebody close, you would take the cartridge out and touch them with it. Now they just tell us, leave the cartridge in, pop. And that's actually probably better because you get the, uh, you might have some kind of spread. And if you, you know, if you take it off, uh, take the cartridge out, your spread is only like that. And it's just like, it's a, that's pain compliance. If I get to the taser or the close, that's just to make you do something. And if you have the cartridge out, it's, it's more about control, it's going to be, hopefully sometime a spread, we give a little bit of, you want the whole wide spread possible. Cause it immobilize everything between the two points, all the muscles. So you don't want a spread like this, if you can get it, you won't want it like this. And then people were, you're, uh, you know, I've heard, but people, a lot of people die after they taste. Probably not much want, but they haven't attributed to the taste necessarily, but they decided to deliver it, you know? So somebody's jacked up on drugs, you know, your body, your body have so much adrenaline, then you, all of a sudden you taste, you know, cause your body literally goes. That's what it is. Now they tell us, don't shoot it in the front, if you can avoid it, a heart. So that's from litigation, I'm sure with taser. So, and we, they, we've worked on shoot people in play. So, it's gotta change with the time. Now, they said, if, if you can't, if you can avoid it, don't shoot it in the front. You know, so if you're, you know, you gotta shoot or, you know, you're shot, and that's reasonable. They got a new thing out now too, it's probably about a year or so, it's called Polar Rappies. It, it looks like a little phaser and there's some, people start this out, I've seen it, but they, uh, so you basically, you point at somebody, like I said, like a phaser from Star Trek. And she's got a kevlar rope and it wraps you up. So if I shoot your legs, it'll shh, you know, grab, grab body. Or if they shoot your tongue. What's that?
We can like that, you know, we did cartoon or something.
Yeah. And it's, uh, both places, Minnesota was one of the first places to buy, and I want to say it was many, you know, Minneapolis Police Department. Of course, the town, you know, their parents is dumb, but they were, I'm not saying we're the ones who first wants to get it or, you know, to look at it. The text there is less lethal, it's pretty effective. But I'm sure it's like a taser, taser for everybody. And maybe the wrap, you know, you have that, a bad placement or something, but I like the fact that. It's just another non-lethal force that it won't hurt anybody.
That's good.
So, as I don't know if we're ever gonna get.
Thank you.
Terry, sorry. I know you.
Oh, sorry.
You're meaning to get home. Well, I appreciate you having.
All right, we reconvened from executive session and we're all back. Take a step. Item D. Oh, everybody, everybody's still here that was here.
Make a motion, we proceed with an appraisal.
Good.
We've had a motion and a second. Call vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ken.
Yes, item Terry's. Thank you, and that would bring us to item twenty-seven, the German.
So moved.
Kind of a motion and a second.
Danielle and I.
Okay.
And we'll call vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ken?
Yes, we are turned. Merry Christmas.
I'd like to point out, I think I had perfect attendance for this whole.
Did you?
I don't think I missed a single one.
I don't want anybody looking at my.
Cause normally I would miss the golf, but I made it. So I'm not gonna be here.
See you all next.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, look, Randy scored a lift. The major award. I love it. Tonight, it's coming tonight.
And so Jason was like, what's your plan? I'm like, that's the real plan. I'm going to go on vacation. I'm going to get home and I'm sure we got plans.
Leaning in the window. There it is. It's a major award. That's awesome.
I did a lot of, uh, Google searches on her. Um, and she's pretty invisible. So her daughter's like, this is basically works out as a COVID clinic in, like, North Alaska, but I know that's a lot. I can't find anything about it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Hey, I'd rather be February, just do it, just do it.